Quick, I know the beginning of school year is often be time consuming for administrators and for teachers. I would like to honor their hard work by getting out of here at a reasonable loud. I might be asking for more than I can deliver, but that's my intention today. So, I'd like to call our Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting on September 12th, 2019 to the board. And I would like to invite any public participation from the audience if there is any tonight. Seeing no public participation, I would like to ask for the approval of a minute from the July 11th, 2019 school committee meeting. Do I have a second? Any further comments, questions? Call those in favor. I against. Any suspensions?
Suspensions.
Any suspensions? Thank you very much. Principals report. Jim, we're at your host tonight.
Thank you. So, the first is staff update. I just wanted to update our hires since the last time we met. The first is Dan Stewart, who is our insurance assistant principal. He is coming to us from Quincy High School, where he was a school psychologist. And he's returning to Silver Lake Regional Middle School. I actually hired him as our school psychologist my second year here. So, he had been here as our school psychologist, went over to Quincy, which is where he had done his practice. And then he's come back. I don't know if any of you guys remember Dan Stewart, but you know, he's our new assistant principal, so you'll actually probably be, I'm sure, you'll be in him along the year. But so, welcome, Dan Stewart. Second person is Kelly Smith. She is our new math teacher for our round in the seventh grade. She was the Silver Lake soccer coach, and she is a Silver Lake graduate, and she is returning back to Rubens, and she is, she joined us this year as the math teacher for seventh grade rounds. Adam Tiro is our new therapeutic learning center teacher. He's coming to us from Waymouth High School, and he also worked at PACC as their, in their therapeutic learning center. And also, we have Beth Asmus, who is our seventh grade long-term sub for science. She is coming to us from Pembroke Middle School. She was a science teacher for Pembroke Middle School. She had taken a few years off to be with her kids, and she is coming to us to do the long-term sub. So, we're happy to have her, and those are our new staff hires. Title One Summer School. I want to thank Janine Astor, Beth Blumer, and Michael Burney. They did a great job this summer with summer enrichment camp. Focus on the enhancement camp is to reinforce math and reading skills in the summer to avoid regression. Improvement in the area of reading went from 75% accurate to 78% accuracy. And the overall improvement in math went from 53% accuracy to 67% accuracy. We also ran our summer enrichment for math with Pam Sanford. Those were students who want to expand and extend their understanding of proportionality. I want to thank Pam Sanford for doing a great job with our summer math enrichment camp. Professional development, we had over 14 curriculum development projects over the summer. I want to thank all of our teachers for their hard work over the summer to bring that back to our school for the school year. We have our August open house, obviously late in August. It was a great night. We had over 500 parents, students come through the building to get their schedules, meet their teachers. The teachers do a presentation. Presentation here to try to acclimate the parents to our school. Some of the Google software that we have here, it's one of the things that we did from our school council, and we now offer that not only August open house, but we also offer it to parents at back to school night, and it helps to acclimate. And the change that we made with the presentations with the teacher was something that we did through school council about two years ago. It's been very successful. It really gives the parents an opportunity to meet the teams, hear about the teams, and the upcoming events, and expectations on the teams. So, the August open house is very successful. Upcoming events, so we have the Welcome Back Cookout Dance that's happening on 9/27. We have our back to school night on September 19th, where the parents will come back. They'll have a half an hour where I'll kind of talk globally about the school, and then they get to follow their child's schedule from class to class, and hear about their classes, and meet all the teachers. And so, that's our back to school night. And out of state field trips for approval. We have our Great East Music Festival that will be happening on May 29th, Friday, May 29th, where our band and our honors course take our students to compete, and then they do an event up at Keddy Lake Park afterwards. Do you want me to go through all of them?
Yeah, we've low loaded it. The ticket, you realize to do that, you said, to give overall approval to all of them? Or should we do them all at the same time?
You can do them all at once. Just.
Okay, so then the next one is the Providence Bruins. So, that's where we take roughly about 100 of our students. We go up to the Providence Bruins game. They sing on center ice before the game, and then they attend the game as a group. Say, Follynn does that, she does a great job. And that's going to be Friday, January 3rd. It's really exciting to see them ahead of time. We're downstairs, and we're like getting excited to get on the ice. It's really great. It's a lot of positive energy, and then they get on the ice, and they sing in front of like 8,000 to 10,000 fans, and then they get to watch the game after. So, that's Providence Bruins. We have a Keddy Lake Park field trip that comes up in late May, and that's a field trip for a team. And then, we also have the Brown Latin Academy Field Trip, where the Latin students go down to Brown University, and this is December 9th, and they go down, they participate in this Latin Academy. So, it's really a great event that our Latin teacher, along with one of our social studies teachers, who's also, you know, certified in classics, and he goes down with them as well. So, those are all of our out of state.
Okay, so I'll let you take the motion, and then we have the discussion.
Middle school, or normal out of state trips unless somebody has.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any points of discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, just one more is the New York City update. So, we are moving forward for our New York City trip. We have over 70 students already signed up to participate. We have 18 spaces still left, and it's for the weekend of November 9th to the 10th. Obviously, I'll be attending for the overnight trip as well. We moved it to a weekend that's a long weekend. One of the things that we found was that, you know, when we come back Sunday, we get tired and kind of struggling on Monday, so now we're picking a long weekend so that we can try to avoid that. So, so I just wanted to update, I know we already go here on that, and we already have a lot of students participating, we have over 70. The expectation is probably around 90 when we go. It was such a great event last year, and we're excited to move back to begin.
I always appreciate you just bringing on field trips. So, I think that's a great idea to bring them back on a long weekend.
Yeah.
Just please extend to your staff, administrative, professional, parent professional, our thanks for the extra hours they put in to prepare for the school year, and to get their classrooms ready to welcome the students. And I know it's very difficult for a lot of students to join you for the first day, especially our seventh graders from our community. Your teachers continue to do a outstanding job, and make a difference. Our children support you so much.
Thank you, James. So, I'm very happy to have all three of my kids at the high school now, but I'm really sad because the first time in five years not to have anybody except for maybe one year in the middle, at the middle school. And as you go through that list of things, like, you know, I'm done, we're done.
We spent a lot of time doing it all.
I know. And it was, we were going back to school, and I'm being involved with the middle school. So, you know, just, yeah, thank you to our family and all the families that come to the middle school, because it's a really awesome place to be.
Thank you. It's very kind of you.
To Lita, as well. Personally, thank you because you gave a kid a little bit of self-confidence and helped her. I want you to remember that you made a big difference today.
Thank you, Lita. It's very kind. I mean, I do think of the 550 students that we have here, as I think of them as our students, and I care very much about each student. So, everything that we talk about has meaning for me, because I put it in perspective as, you know, what I want to bring for my kids, what I want to bring to your kids. So, your sentiment's very kind, and I will absolutely express it to my staff. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Ms. Gill.
Hi, everybody. Welcome back. High school's good. High school's good. We also have some new staff updates to share with you. Leah Wilkinson is our new adjustment counselor. Nicola Fannasiv, who has been on our ELA staff, is now our ELA coordinator for seventh through 12 at both schools. And replacing her in the classroom as a full-time ELA teacher is Nicole Gill. We are not related, but I do get all of her students' Google assignments shared with me. They'll learn in a week or two that they're sending it with to the wrong Gill. But it's lovely stuff to read.
They haven't read her alphabet yet.
Too close. M Gill, M Gill. It's great. Good stuff, better reading. Really excited to introduce Carrie Mathias, our new librarian to everybody. As you know, Linda Redding, near and dear to our hearts, you know, tough shoes to fill. She has stayed on as Carrie's mentor this year, so it's a great partnership as the reins pass from one librarian to the next. So, I encourage you to come stop by and see the new space and how it's rearranged in the library if you can. Derek Friedus was added to our night custodian team, and Lynn Eagleson, who has been teaching at the middle school, transferred over to the high school. So, she started with us this week, and we're excited to have her on board. We have some summer projects and programs to update you on. In addition to our E S Y and summer school programs, we had a fourth year of summer at the lake. This is a teacher-driven enrichment program that's held each year. Ms. Ferrera, who's here this evening, held a crafting a compelling college essay course. Mr. McStowe taught creative writing. Mr. Tilly taught a Spanish immersion class. And Ms. Ritchie taught an SAT verbal crash course, handwriting course, and interview skills for college and career. Ms. Rohr taught intro to sewing. Students made hair scrunchies, I think was what they were doing. And Mr. Cronin taught intro to sculpture, steel, and tool making. He's one of our metal fab teachers. Facility-wise, some updates, the custodians were very busy this summer. The steps to Syracuse Field are now in. We're very excited about that. However, we are still waiting on the railings. Our goal is to have them in place by homecoming. Our football practice field was re-crowned and re-sotted. As you saw earlier, our greenhouse is nearly done, and it's a beautiful new addition to our classroom space down in CTE. Our trainer floor was resurfaced. It was peeling and deteriorating, and actually it was safer for athletes going in and out, so we have a nice bouncy rubbery soft textured floor in there. And then, of course, we had our general annual maintenance and repair that the custodians worked very hard on throughout the summer to get the building ready for opening day. Currently, we are in the process of an LED upgrade, so all of our lights are being changed out. The students, some hallways are halfway done, and so you can actually see it's very, the contrast, it is night and day. So, we're excited to have that. And we are also in the process of wire installation for our vape detectors and additional cameras that are being added for security in our building. Last month, we welcomed our freshmen for our annual freshman forum, the class of 2023, and their parents joined us on campus for a tour. We issued the Chromebooks. Students had an opportunity to learn how to open their lockers, figure out where their classes are. They met with both teachers and student volunteers to learn a little bit more about the daily grind at Silver Lake and what to expect their first couple of days in the new building. I'd like to thank Mr. Korea and Mrs. Fontaine for organizing this event, our IT team for helping with the distribution of a couple hundred Chromebooks, as well as our teachers and students who volunteered that day. We had a very enthusiastic opening for school this year. Our theme, as you know, I pick a theme every year. This year was chosen to recognize our staff for the many roles they play and the hats that they wear, as well as the determination, grit, and success of our students, both inside and outside of the classroom walls. As an administrative team, we are committed to supporting our staff, our students, and our community. We commit to continuing to build a culture where every student feels valued, and every educator is empowered to pursue their passion. So, this year's theme is above and beyond. Ready for the cheese? Because it's Silver Lake, our staff goes above so that our students go beyond. We did a little space theme for opening day this year. Our parent orientations begin tomorrow. The guidance department hosts these annually. There's a different topic for each grade level. Our seniors will be here tomorrow. Our senior parents are invited tomorrow to talk about future planning, you know, post-high school years, what to expect throughout this year. Junior parents will come in at the end of the month for college and career readiness. Our sophomores are next week. Our guidance counselors just talk about what to expect for sophomore year, as well as the MCAS testing that they'll be taking in our ninth grade when we do as part of our freshman forum. So, I'd like to share AP scores with you that came in over the summer. 256 students took 558 tests this year. That's down a bit from last year, actually. We had 273 students taking 606 tests last year. This is really attributed to just a lower overall school enrollment. Our scores went down slightly in a few subject areas, but also rose significantly in others. We took 16 subject tests last year, 18 this year, and our average score across all areas went up from 3.23 to 3.51. So, that's incredible, and just want to congratulate our students for their hard work and our teachers for all that they do to support our students. I'm almost done, I promise. Last spring, Leslie Ann reached out and recommended a program called Credit for Life, and asked if we had heard about that, suggested it might be a good fit for the high school. And so, at the same time, two of our, two of our staff members had asked me about it, and you know, it just sort of was perfect timing. So, we have two staff members who are interested in bringing a Credit for Life fair to Silver Lake. And essentially, what it is, is an experience for students where they're each given a credit score, salary, and a job, profession, and based on that information, they have to make certain life choices. And so, they visit a series of booths that are set up at the fair. Everything from housing, furniture, transportation, you know, utilities, and then there's, I think, a wheel that you spin, and it's like, uh-oh, dog has to go to the vet, you know, unexpected expenses that may pop up, to try to teach them based on, you know, what, what their profile is, the decisions that they should be making. So, our staff members, Leslie Kalanowski and Casey Sheehan, spent the summer meeting with other schools who have hosted this event in the past, trying to learn more about the process. Thanks to Dr. Crew, a school-to-career connecting activity grant was secured, and will help fund this event. They've started reaching out to local businesses, the Kingston Business Association, and other folks that are local to us that may be able to participate and volunteer for the day. So, the idea is that outside, members of our community will come in and host a different table. You know, we could have, like, a local automotive company might host the transportation table. You know, representatives from local banks would come in and be the credit counselors, and they serve as the reality check for students about their decisions. So, this year will be a pilot year for us, so we are going to work with four of our math classes, junior-level math classes, to have them go through it. So, it'll service about 100 of our students, and then the goal is by year two to open it up to the entire junior class to be able to have this experience. So, stay tuned for more information on that. And then, just some upcoming events to share with everybody. Homecoming 2019 is the week of September 23rd to 28th. You're all invited, of course, to all of our activities and events that week. One thing that is especially nice that has grown over the years is our tailgating activity that takes place before the football game. Student council is always looking for judges, so as members of the school committee, you can help decide who has the best food, the best activity, and the best decor. We have an early release professional development day on September 23rd. The focus for our staff will be on social-emotional learning and goal-setting for the year. And on that day, we will also provide our annual Alice training to students ahead of our scheduled safety drills for the year. Our parent conferences will take place on October 10th, and we promise to have our parents home in time for the big football game that night. And then, our SOS training, assigned to suicide training for parents, will take place October 10th and 11th. We'll do both the morning and an evening time, so they have an option to try to get to one of them. And then, I do have a donation request this evening. Mr. Faust would like to donate $400 to the library for technology purchase. Some of you may remember several years ago, on behalf of his wife, he donated money for our iPad lab. So, he would like to make another donation on behalf of his wife. Mrs. Mathias, our new librarian, has been meeting with him and spoken to him at length, and they're hoping to apply it to purchasing a virtual reality headset. That, along with the PTO mini-grant-funded Maker Space, would bring the augmented reality to our school. And of course, if approved.
Motion to accept the donation of $400. Do you have a motion? Right session. Any comments? All those in favor?
Great. And of course, we would send a thank you to Mr. Faust. So, thank you all for your support, and welcome back.
You know, I don't want to sound like I'm just saying this because I said it to Jim earlier. I don't have a feeling. And Silver Lake still, my students are still on the elementary level, although you talked about all of the great programming at the high school and the staff who made the summer meaningful to so many students, and also gave their time to get the building and their classrooms and their materials ready for their kids to come. It just makes me so excited to know that my children will be attending your high school someday. So, thank you to your staff. Please extend that to professionals, parent professionals, administrative secretaries, and thank you to you as well for organizing the shift.
Thank you.
Comment too. Back about the Credit for Life. Both my sons had economics last year, and they did sort of the same thing as part of that class. They had money, a job, they had a apartment, a car, all this stuff. But one of my kids did really well, was very appropriate in terms of where he was putting the money. The other one figured out he could save money, buy a Corvette, and live in that instead. It was actually less per month than his brother, who was living in a house.
One of the nice things about the vendors or different businesses coming in is they can sponsor raffles or prizes for the students, so those who actually make the best financial decisions are rewarded for their efforts, so.
Does it go over all in one day, or is it just one day?
It's actually just a few hours.
Really?
Yeah. There's some events leading up to it, so there's a classroom component, there's a little bit of.
That's probably what I'm thinking about.
Yeah. So, there's a curriculum that goes along with it to prepare them in advance, that they would get within their classes. But the actual fair is usually about a three-hour event.
Yeah, I can see it being a classroom event.
Hopefully, it would generate more conversations to follow, too.
So, this is a, this is a program that's pretty well-established, actually. A number of the high schools on the Cape do it. Duxbury does it. So, I'm really excited because I honestly think that all of us, growing up with home economics, and we, we don't have that anymore, or consumer, whatever, whatever your room was originally called upstairs there?
Yeah, it's like consumer.
Science. Science, or something like that, whatever, whatever you're calling it. It's a real, it's a real gap, and I think that even if it's only for a few hours, it's great to bring some back. And it was really great to hear that you had a sewing class this summer. I mean, you know, it's like, I'm really nostalgic about all that growing up, you know? Like, it was all good stuff. We have a VR system at home if you guys want to come play.
So, Christine, this is an interesting time of year to get to the financials, since there's not much in common.
Look how happy she is.
We are in a, we're doing very well. We kicked off the new year. Nothing extraordinary has happened either way. So, we're, we're okay right now. We're ready for whatever comes next. But after hearing all the information of what was coming from the middle school and the high school, I didn't want to say that we have also had some staff changes. Our colleagues retired, so that's very sad. We worked together for 10 and a half years, and she was an amazing, she did an amazing job. So, she has retired, and our payroll specialist, Anne Ruzo, has moved into that position, and our benefit specialist, Gail Thompson, has moved into the payroll specialist position, and we have hired a new benefit specialist person. So, we're fully staffed.
That cross-training, cross-pollination is wonderful as well.
Well, it's amazing that the person with payroll specialist, now she understands how every account's payable and payroll, the cornerstone of our financial reports. So, now you understand how that happens, what creates that situation. So, I think it's going to be amazing.
Paul, I'm so glad we just caught Christine's report on camera. I hope we can show her that before every meeting.
Remember when you were happy, Christine? I can pull it off, but the words may be in conflict with the expressions.
Can I ask a quick question on, are you gonna?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm just curious. I, we signed all our warrants, and I'm glad that we can do that. I'm wondering about a question that's not a problem yet, but I, we had sort of an issue last year, and I think it's a recurring issue, is the homeless transportation. It's sort of always ends up big. So, I'm just kind of wondering, are there steps that we can do? Like, I noticed in signing one of the warrants, for instance, that we're using a taxi service. Is there any way that we know that's going to be an issue, that we can come up with a
We don't, because it's just situational. It could change tomorrow. Tomorrow can be very different from today, and the students that entered the year in that situation may not be starting the year in that situation, and they are all over the place. Bedford, in the fall, wherever, Kingston. So, we really just have to take each situation as it comes and do the best we can to manage that. We do have some amazing resources, like City of Brockton has a whole department for this. So, they're a great resource for us if we're really struggling to find transportation, and they're very helpful. They are. So, there are a lot of resources out there, and sometimes it's just a struggle based on the location and the times that school starts. And you're, every year's a new adventure. I budget based on, I do it average of the prior five years, but that actually has no, not much of a connection to what's going to happen. But I have to start somewhere, and that's where I start.
So, the numbers constantly stack, and the number of people in their homes is constantly changing.
Right. The numbers and the situations, each one is unique, so we just try to do the best we can to make it work. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Our assistant superintendent Jill is my co-hire today for the GM. Jill, it's over to you.
Okay, so in your packet, you have both the curriculum assessment and assessment update, as well as professional development schedule for the year. As of August of this year, we had our professional development council meeting today, but no big, no big changes. We filled in with details as they come over this summer. We've got a number of curriculum projects going on with our teachers working on curriculum development, and a number of teachers participating in curriculum mapping, planning out new changes. For example, a lot of history and social science teachers participating because of the new frameworks, and thinking about the ways to update their, their frameworks, but also the school in sequence for their courses and where certain things would and should be taught. We trained our administrative team in two new castle competencies. We talked a long time ago about five main competencies in social-emotional learning. And so, our focus this year is social awareness and relationship skills. And so, our building leaders and coordinators and department chairs will be working throughout the year with our staff to continue to find ways to integrate social-emotional learning into the classroom, not as a separate subject, but a way as working with and helping students to achieve their math goals, their science goals, and things of that nature. Our parent professionals participated in training through Pilgrim Area Collaborative, focusing mostly on practical and effective tools in supporting classrooms on August 26th, our first day with staff. We did something different this year. Our district welcome was on the second day, and our building welcome was on the first day. The reason for that change, we wanted to take advantage of award-winning auditor and presenter, Tom Murray, who came and spoke to our staff. We wanted to accommodate his schedule because we were also sharing the cost with two other districts, Duxbury and Carver, and so that allowed us to have him come in, so we were flexible. And the staff had wonderful things to say about him. The PD council always sends out a survey after we've done different trainings or speakers to get feedback, to think about what else they may need, what might have made the training more effective, for example. And they really like to just focus on relationship skills and solve the strong connection to what we have been doing with the plan for success, but also a really positive way to start the school year. He was motivational and engaging, so that, that was very well-received. There are a number of different things here that I'm not going to read to you. There are really just two big things focusing on our November professional development day. Our secondary school is focusing on curriculum development. You may recall, our NEOS accreditation team have pushed us in the direction of making sure that our curriculum is all written in a common format, and so we have been providing training and understanding by design, but also providing teachers with time to get together and work together and collaborate on curriculum development. It's not the only reason why we're doing it, but I just like to note that connection as to what's for us, and where, where are we going with this direction here and now. So, we have a curriculum, but curriculum is something that continually needs to be updated and revised in time. We also have a number of different subjects that have new frameworks that also need to be considered. At the elementary level, Alyssa is planning professional development specifically related to the new math program. So, there's going to be, Dr. Mickey Newton will be there for a keynote, but also Pearson Training and the new edition math program at the elementary level. So, district-wide, there'll be a bunch of things going on. And then, for our specialty areas, we're going to be doing some more subject-specific workshops for, for other areas. So, for example, the librarians will be working on things across the schools. And our teachers will be getting together, if they're not working on understanding by design, to share and collaborate on projects, things of that nature. And then in February, we're welcoming Alan November. A lot of our professional development students came back with a need for a greater focus on integrating technology into the classroom effectively to meet the diverse needs of students. And so, the PD council is working on a day where we have Alan November talking about the future of technology in our schools and ways to implement it effectively. We'll have workshops that are led by teachers in the afternoon as well. And we'll have some training on some programming that's not so new, but teachers may need more training in it in order to feel like it's something that they would use or figure out ways that they could use it in their classrooms. So, that's the February plan.
It's great to see how much of the PD is directly related to data that we've received from multiple sources to address those points, but also the way that we're acknowledging the fact that curriculum and curriculum plans are living documents, that we need to look at what the state's asking us to do, but also hearing back from the teachers on what's working, what's not working, so we can address those in a timely manner. It's really good to hear that's the practices that we're employing.
So, and we appreciate the honesty and the willingness of people to fill them out. It's a short survey, it's ten questions, but you, you know, you'd be surprised at how even the ten questions are written, sometimes go unnoticed or untaken, but we have a pretty good response rate for most of our surveys, so we're happy about that.
I was just going to say that, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, that, you know, the back-to-school night's always, you know, great, no matter what year your child is in, it's just fabulous, sit down and put a face to, a name to a face, face to a name, kind of thing. But, you know, what I see more and more as I move through the system, and I've already had one that's come and gone, but just, you know, as I go back through it again, it's amazing how the technology piece is, you know, mostly being embraced, but specifically it's amazing how almost every module now, the teacher's giving some additional resources that are online to support what you see in a four-hundred-page, six-hundred-page textbook. In fact, to the point where you see that some teachers just will tell you, I don't use the textbook, I'm just going to give you online resources to support it. And, you know, everybody's different and everybody adopts it differently. But it's really great to see that they're actually actively going out and finding resources from a technology perspective that are going to help the kids who learn differently, you know, or, you know, every child learns differently. They actually give them multiple different angles on the same topic. So, I think that's a great thing that I've seen over the last few years. Not just because my child's going up in age, it's because that's what's sort of being more pervasive in the classroom, so I think it's great.
They're exciting opportunities. And I think by creating a culture where teachers feel comfortable sharing what works and even being comfortable saying, this is what I'm having difficulty with, and working with other colleagues, I think it raises our level of using technology effectively. Teachers will use technology if it makes sense, if it's effective, and if it doesn't detract from what they're trying to do. And so, I think we're also at a point where technology becomes easier and easier to use as well. You're not worried about it breaking down and not working, or things of that nature. So, I think it's all.
I think on the flip side, though, I see them, at least one particular situation where they're realizing that the online resource is not a substitution for actually doing the work. So, for instance, in chemistry, you can watch chemistry animations, they can take a virtual dropper and you can drop, you know, a chemical in a virtual solution and you can see the virtual reaction. And, you know, she's just like, you gotta actually do it, you know, you actually have to pick up the beaker and, you know, and I think that's reasonable, so.
But some students also benefit from seeing the animation.
Sure.
Prior to, especially if they're more visual and they're learning. So, it's just another way, one more way of providing students with access. It's exciting. The wellness committee, we established goals at the end of last year. We said that we wanted to, in the past year, you may recall, we did a lot of our wellness opportunities district-wide, on district days. And the committee would really like to see schools begin to implement more wellness opportunities for staff at the building level. And so, the team will be considering ways to encourage that kind of wellness participation at the school level as opposed to just kind of a sample on a district day. We are looking to expand the breakfast program to the high school, that's one of Megan's goals. But Megan also announced, and she was sharing this with us last year as part of the wellness team as well, but she, I'm pretty excited about this. She announced that she's going to be offering to-go lunches for field trips and to anyone who has had to make lunches for field trips on a night when you're tired. This is really exciting, that you could just order one through the school and your child's going to be all set with a box, I'm thrilled. And she's also going to be providing us opportunities for teachers to order lunches on Professional Development Days, so that's another exciting opportunity for us that I wanted to mention, too. We're seeking funding sources and Christine is also looking into insurance and to see whether or not we might qualify for insurance for grant money for, to replace older outdated automatic extraneous defibrillators, I can't say the word, I'm sorry, AEDs. And so, we're looking into not only funding, but making sure that the replacement of AEDs that are purchased are compatible with the town. So, we wanted to mention that that's one of our goals as well for this year. And let's see, importantly, Title I, Title II and Title IV grants were all submitted, they were all approved. Title I this year went down by one hundred, by more than $117,000. Title II went down by over $16,000. There was a slight increase in Title IV, which was increased by $15,000. I mention this to you because this could be an upcoming concern. One, for Title I, I know that Alyssa is particularly concerned about the future of Title I study programming. We were able to make things work for this year, but moving forward, that is a concern for her. And when she gives her budget presentation, she'll probably have more information for you about ideas that she has moving forward. For Title II, I want to express the concern that Title II is the entirety of the curriculum instruction and assessment budget for professional development that occurs at a district level for us. We don't have a line that I would use for professional development or paying teachers for curriculum work, some things of that nature. So, a lot of those things are coming right now from Title II A and as that shrinks, it's just something to be aware of as a potential future need for the budget. We will continue to look for alternative funding sources. Grants tend to shift, the RFPs, the expectations of grants change. So, we'll continue to try to get creative and seek. Sometimes we, like this year, we knew about Title I, but there was really little to alert us to Title II other than the fact that Title I wasn't going to be available.
Just for the record, Jill, can you let me know where Title I and II funding comes from at the state or federal level?
They're federal programs, but it goes through the state. So, we apply through the state for the funding, but they're federal funds.
And the overall federal funding was cut to states last year. It's just another indication that not all politics is local and that things that happen in Washington DC do affect our students and our schools. I love the fact that you read your first report about the great professional development, the curriculum work first, to let us know what those funds are being used for. And you see what good it's doing for our students and for the overall reputation of our district. And to hear that the funding for those programs and that curriculum work is potentially a risk is very, very troubling. While it's not the best news to hear, I'm glad you delivered it the way you did, because I think it makes a very salient point of the critical position public schools find themselves in two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. If you have any questions, I think I'm going to try to ask them.
Any questions for Jill?
Thank you.
I would just say, no, I think it's great that they're doing the to-go lunches for field trips, but if they want to raise revenue, they need to go dinners for families.
So, just for kids after school.
Actually, she may be looking into that, yeah.
A lot of towns and lots of cities do that because it's typically the kids don't get to eat, you know, where they eat is here, or here, just at their schools. I mean, is there any possibility if we need to be down the line, adopt something like that? I don't think we need to do it.
I think Megan is pretty open-minded to thinking about creative ways of addressing community needs and I think if, I think if the numbers indicated that that's something that would, I think she would even be willing to pilot something to see if it would go. She's, you know, she's been very creative and very open-minded to try to figure out what will work and what are needs are, so.
That's a good question, leads me to the question about the children who are free or reduced lunch. I mean, I know we help them out with breakfast as well, but, you know, to Ed's point, I mean, does that, is there a program to also fund take-home meals?
So, the field trip lunches are covered by free and reduced lunch. So, if a student is receiving free and reduced lunch in the cafeteria, they qualify for one on the field trip.
Same with breakfast. Now, if we did an aftercare program, it would, because it goes through the school lunch, school lunch program, it would, they would also be eligible if, in fact, we. Schools that do aftercare programs often goes through the same system, so they're eligible in the same way.
Any other questions?
No, I'd love her efforts, though.
Yeah.
I mean, she, talk about hitting the ground running. Wow.
And the staff lunches look good. I'm excited. I'm like guacamole wrapped.
And she sent us a nice menu of box lunches to choose from, so. They looked wonderful.
We'll have to do a school committee box dinner. We'll take orders for the October meeting.
And business service people brought us samples.
So, under new business, I left it blank this evening, just understanding that this is our first meeting back from the summer and to do some housekeeping, then when we come back in October. I had mentioned an interest last spring at looking potentially at some dual enrollment or early college programs and how we might be able to integrate them here at Silver Lake. But, again, to respect everyone's time, we'll leave that. I did leave under old business, leave the superintendent's search there. I wanted to publicly thank Paula for chairing the preliminary screening team. I know it's going to be a lot of work and I know how important that work is and to know that you're at the helm on behalf of Silver Lake and the three towns really gives me solace. So, I appreciate your efforts and everything you've done so far, Paula, thank you.
You're very welcome. It's a good committee.
I'm glad to hear that. The superintendent application period is still currently open, but we are quickly coming to an end, so if anyone is interested in applying for the superintendent of Silver Lake Regional Schools and superintendents in Union Thirty-One, please submit your materials at masc.org. Paula, is there any other information you'd like to add in the public comment at this point about the search or is that about it?
That's about it. I would want to publicly thank Jim Hardy for joining us last night. He did a wonderful job of stepping the team through expectations, the process. We mapped out our next few weeks to be in line with the timeline that the union in Silver Lake gave us. The team is very energized, very educated at this point, thanks to Jim, on how to go about this. And we will, we will do our best and we will be back with the best folks that we can find.
Thank you again so much and please relay my appreciation to your team as well.
I will.
Thank you. On to reports of committees. That's L E A, I'd like to speak to.
Sure, just a quick leadership update. So, I think I know everyone, but in case not, I'm John Lay, I teach music at the middle school, I'm also the vice president for the middle school. And Megan Rabinevich is the president. She is out on maternity leave until the end of term one. So, if there are any concerns that anyone on the committee wants to speak to SLEA about, you refer them to me or Tony Pina is the vice president at the high school. So, we're kind of taking over for now. Megan will be back at the beginning of term two and she will be president at least through the end of the year. Congratulations to Megan.
Administrative review, I don't believe we've had a meeting. Career and technical education, I'd like to hand it over to Chris, who was just re-elected as the chairman again for another year of the CTE program.
Thank you. We just had a meeting tonight, a brief meeting to sort of update ourselves on what's going on with Elliot's World. The biggest change we've kind of been highlighting all year last year was the greenhouse. It's ninety-nine-plus percent done, they've got a few little tweaks to do. We got a tour of it, it's fantastic. And in a couple of weeks, they're going to have the CTE advisory meeting with everyone and hopefully have a ribbon cutting with the students that night. And that's October seventeenth. Other things going on CTE, it's about thirty percent of school attending, some sort of program, almost three hundred students. And the allied health is off to a booming demand, I guess you'd say. Students really want to get into it and it might be competitive to place all those students because of capacity issues. So, those are the big highlights, I think, from CTE.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you very much, Chris. For the chairman's report correspondence, I have been invited to sit down with the finance committee chair of Kingston and the board of selectmen chair of Kingston, for them just to let all the departments, and we're one of the departments included, know about their projections about their financial capacities for budgets moving forward. I don't make any commitments on behalf of our committee. I sit and I listen to what they let us know and I bring it back to you. So, it's a very cordial meeting, it's pretty informative and I will bring back any information that I garnered from that. You may have seen that Charlie from Halifax reached out to us requesting some FaceTime before we started our budget process. I did reply to Charlie and I asked him if he would like to have a similar process to the one that Kingston has, where we can come in and they can let us know the forecast and prognostications of their town. And again, in that meeting, I would sit and I would listen to their feedback, always remembering that I speak for the committee and I will not speak without knowing the heart and the voice of the committee. I believe it's our job to always be advocating for what's in the best needs of our students. I know that their job is very often the bottom line of their town and multi-departments. I want us to keep in mind when we're here and some of the pressures that might be coming from the towns, our obligation is to this department and to the students of these schools. So, any questions about moving forward with those meetings or Charlie's email?
I have a comment. So, about the Kingston meeting, that's required by bylaw for them to hold that meeting before October one, I think it is. So, and I'm attending as the chair of the elementary school committee in Kingston and I've been to it the past couple of years. It is, as you said, they don't really have a lot of information at this first meeting, they're just required by bylaw to have it, so it's kind of, things look good, things look bad, whatever, it's pretty quick. And you're right, I mean, there's no, there really isn't much direction coming from them this early anyways. From Halifax probably more, but not from Kingston yet.
As anybody who's interacted with Charlie ever before knows, he is an extremely intelligent man and he has been looking at the patterns of state funding and how it's impacting Halifax, but also Plington and Kingston and the regional school as a whole. And he's very concerned about how the state funding seems to be level at this point and when our budget goes up, it all comes back onto the backs of the town. And how that's affecting the town budgets is very concerning for him. So, you know, I would really like to sit down and listen to Charlie. Every time I'm in the room with him, I come out a little bit smarter than when I went in. So, I take, I take the interests of the towns to heart, but again, the remembrance of who I represent and what we stand for is always at the forefront of my agenda. Moving on to the legislative agents' report, the state did not come up with a budget by July first, as many of you know. The bills going through promising additional funding for education are still stuck in somewhat of a quagmire at the state house. Recently, Governor Baker has been telegraphing that time for additional funds for education might not be this year. We are not going to be receiving any of the funds, even if any of the bills that are currently in the legislative process go through. They're really for the most needy schools. And I know that might not feel fair necessarily to us, but if you stepped foot in some of these schools who are in desperate need, you would understand where their arguments are coming from. I still believe that it's better to try and raise us all together at the same time, but there is some disproportionality in the equity between schools' ability to pay within certain communities and the Commonwealth. And we're really trying to meet the needs of those chronically underperforming schools. And we're really trying to meet the needs of those chronically underperforming schools, students who have low-income ELL situations, extremely high rates of special needs. And that's what the major bills at the State House are looking at. So no matter what comes through, we're not getting much help from the State House this year in terms of our budget. So we do have some positive things coming through that don't have anything to do with money. We're forward-leaning and trying to make our schools more equitable and fair to all students who enter into the bill room. And as part of that, I was a member of the resolutions committee for MAS C over the summer. I'll be doing a briefing for you at the October meeting on what the resolutions will be, and you can give me guidance on how you would like me to potentially vote, if you so choose to send me as your delegate representative for Silver Lake Regional Schools. So I would appreciate a nomination, if you're so comfortable, in making me the delegate now, so I can tell MAS C that I'm your delegate. But I will hold back on how I will vote until you give me guidance at the October meeting.
I'm going to motion to sign, Jason, as I'm on the.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll let me go to that.
Thank you very much. I was going to bring up the dates. No, no, I'm glad you're interested in it. So the conference is the joint conference of the Mass Association of School Committees and MAS S, which is the superintendents committee. We hold it yearly down in Hyannis, and it's a four-day conference. It begins on Wednesday, November 6, and it goes through Saturday, November 10. If you're trying to maximize your time, the Thursday and the Friday programs are the strongest when it comes to professional development and opportunities to learn, the Thursday and the Friday. That being said, MAS C in the past has offered a package, a cheaper package, if you sign up for the Friday/Saturday. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to attend any of the sessions on Saturday, but it is a cost savings to Silver Lake because we will pay for you to go to the conference. If you attend the full conference, it is substantially higher expense for the district. And again, the best of the program is that Thursday and that Friday. You can go on MAS C's website now, and they do have some of the panel sessions already online. Not the best descriptions yet, just general overview, one or two sentence explanations.
Okay. I was closer. I went past, they had, you had some videos.
Right, not yet, not yet.
Things are all.
I went years ago.
Years ago, yes. Very much, I've been selling, and it's very useful, general.
I would agree.
If you have some time, you know, even if you cannot go one.
So if you definitely want to go, talk to Lisa. Lisa's always taken care of me and helped me sign up. And if you're interested and not quite sure, please feel free to email me independently, and I can give you some tips and pointers about what might be most fulfilling to you professionally for going to the conference this year. Moving on to negotiations. We'll be talking in executive session today, then we have another meeting on the 23rd. Is that right? Yeah. Five PM to 24th, is it the 24th, Chris?
Yes, 24th, correct.
Yeah, at 5:00 PM. And I believe it's, is it here? I don't know. It's still being.
Library, it's in this, it's right here.
Good teamwork. Thank you. All right. Pat, Ed, any report from Pat?
Yeah. They unfortunately are giving up on trying to get a building, they're going to try and get in, if the town is not accepting any bids lower than $850,000 for a building, and it's just out of the price range back there. Kind of continuing, looking to see if they can find a building that can fit in. We've got a big meeting next week, next Thursday. And I'm expecting to be told us that the market is going to come back to the town.
Great. I appreciate Dr. Thomas trying to find a building to purchase for PAC instead of renting continuously.
It would be very good for our world because that's their place, and it's theirs, the community of their own.
Well, I hope as our member of the board of directors, you continue to support and encourage them to do that. Thank you, I appreciate that. For those of you who don't know what PAC is, that's the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. It houses substantially special needs students that we can't meet the needs up here in district. We send our students there, and that's one of the options that Marie Grable has. We partner with them, and they have essentially their own school committee with subcommittees and meetings, and Ed is our member of the board of directors there. So it is quite a commitment. My thank you, Ed, for taking that on board.
There are, you know, mistake on the number, there's six major members, and then there's like 80 towns and a half gives to come because they have services for them. And yeah, so they give some services specifically that I take down some other places.
Moving on to policy. After the Denet has their school committee meeting on Monday, September 23, there will be a policy subcommittee meeting at 6:30 in the Denet Elementary School library.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Sorry, what did I say?
6:30.
I'm sorry, I was already looking down the ballers. I apologize. 6 o'clock. That does mean that the Denet School Committee meeting has to be an hour or less, which is fantastic news for Megan. Revolving funds.
No meeting.
Thank you very much. And now on to safety facilities fees and revenue.
Next meeting is that very productive evening of the 23rd.
So we welcome all of you to join us at the Denet Elementary School on the 23rd. Again, the policy meeting will be at 6 o'clock in the evening, and our SFFR meeting will be at 6:30.
And I raise a point of interest.
Go ahead.
I believe that that policy meeting, what we have to cover, I can't see it being done in half an hour. And there are people who will be attending as well. So just a point, I don't know if we're going to, if we would stop that meeting early or continue and then not start safer until policy is really done.
Should we move safer?
That can be safer.
I'll defer to the better judgment, but I like the times being where they are. So we're ready to roll the moment policy is over.
Okay.
How do you feel about that, Adam, Joe? It's your committee that might have to wait for a little while?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't looked at what we need to cover in policy. So I, and I, the team members, I wouldn't want to hold anybody over and make them stay through, you know, until we're done with safer. Why are you reluctant, Jason, what's after?
There's nothing after, it's just I know a lot of the policy members are also on safer as well. So I'm not, I'm not quite clear on how long Eric thinks policy might go.
Were we having somebody from SAD coming to the safety?
Somebody from the outside?
Yeah.
No.
Or somebody in the presentation. So it's just us.
Right, right.
So it's just a matter of pushing the meeting back.
Right.
Okay. So Eric believes, he's done this for quite some time, looking at the policies, that it might take an hour to go through the policy subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
Would you like to change the beginning of your meeting until 7 o'clock?
I think it probably makes sense because some of the policy folks can leave and go home, whereas some of us will stay and be joined by a couple of others. So I don't want to hold up anybody from policy.
Okay. Is there going to be any problem posting that? Do we have enough time to change the time from 6:30 to 7 o'clock?
Yes, because there's a whole week between.
Okay, great. All right, so let's just put it to the record and make sure that we post that the safety facilities fees and revenues meeting originally scheduled for 6:30 at the Denet on September 23rd has been moved to 7 o'clock on September 23 at the Denet. Anything further to report? School start times?
No meeting.
No meeting? Treasurers' report?
I can do that, since our assistant treasurer's not here tonight. Tonight, circulating, there are 17 regular warrants totaling $1,075,142.97, and two payroll warrants totaling $919,036.67, for a grand total of $1,994,179.64. Thank you.
Thank you. And Union 31, Mike couldn't make it this evening, so no report at this point. Were there any single signature warrants?
There were. We had 13 warrants totaling $1,377,417.50 that Eric Crone, Laura Chilton, and Chris Affen came in and signed for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you to those of you who came in to sign those warrants. Please pay particular attention to September 23, 2019, as it is an early release day, and our middle school and high school students will be going home at 10:45 a.m., and our elementary students, K-6, and all three towns will be going home at noon. There will be no lunches served. We do have October 14 off for Columbus Day, and our next regular school committee meeting will be on October 24, 2019. Please be aware that I might be calling a meeting prior to that if we have semifinalist candidates available to us from the selection committee. So you look on the lookout for email, and try and keep some of your time available. I know that's a nebulous request, but we're going to have to be very flexible in the next couple of months with getting together to make sure we vote in a timely manner to meet our own deadline for a nomination.
One of the things that we talked about with the slow committee, you know, is obviously a timeline for having some candidates bring forward. And I think that that, you know, I'd like to think that that will happen on time. Obviously, we have no way to know if that will change. But just the need, just the so many schedules, what are the expenses to put out a proposed date for that? And it doesn't, you know, or will be, you know, I just feel like in order to get a lot of people here for that.
So we can do something like that, or maybe proposed dates to save?
Yeah.
It depends on.
That's what we did last night, not knowing how many days we're going to have more interviews. We set a whole lunch aside, just, you know.
Right. So I think that's not a bad idea at all. After the preliminary screening team is over, depending on the pool of semifinalists, the next step could be different depending on if the semifinalists are from far, far outstate, if they're local, if they're known to us just with some of the potential site visits. Those could work different depending on who the preliminary screening team brings back. But I still think, even with that in mind, we can start backfilling some meeting dates. So I'll work with Jim, and I'll work with Paula, just to see what your timeline was from last night, and come up with a few dates that I can send out to the whole committee to hold back.
And get Mike involved in Union, because it's going to be a Union meeting.
Right.
Anyway, good idea. Thank you very much for that. All right. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the Silver Lake Education Association contract negotiation discussion pursuant to Mass General Act, Chapter 30 A, Section 21 A 3, and only returning to regular session for the purposes of the chair. So move to. Paul, listen, Ed?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You need a roll call, don't you?
Do I need a roll call to enter into executive? Right, Eric?
Yes.
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 And yes.
I told children.